All right, with that, I call this planning commission meeting to order on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 at 6:01 PM. I'll now read the COVID protocol notice. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code, Section 5495.3, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency relative to COVID-19 on March 4, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the town can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code 5495.3 in order to protect public health and the safety of attendees. And before I get to the roll call, I realize I was remiss in actually asking if one of you was comfortable with doing the pledge. And Ben, if you are comfortable with it, I was hoping that you could do that. Sounds good. Okay, now I'll take a roll call. Thank you. I saw your head nod. Yes. Roll call, vote. Vice Chair Lester.
Here.
Commissioner Bodie. Oh, not here yet. Commissioner Helber.
Here.
Commissioner Polsky, I believe, is in an excuse absence this evening. Commissioner Teal.
Here.
And I chair Hillisam here. We are also joined by Town of Moraga staff, Planning Director Hamed. We also have Assistant Town Attorney Karen Murphy, Consultants Barry Miller. And I, there's another voice on that's running the meeting for us. Ashan, can you confirm who that is?
Suzie, Susan Mele.
Suzie. Good to put the, the name to the voice. Conflict of interest, do any commissioners have a conflict of interest to report? Seeing none, we will move on. Contact with the applicants, I do not believe we have any applicants this evening, so we can move forward. And now to the pledge of allegiance. I will hold up my flag, Commissioner Helber, if you will do the honors. I'll put myself on mute, so I don't throw you off. Oh, and we have one tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And now is the time for public comment. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the planning commission. The audience should be aware that the commission may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Note, public input will also be taken on each item in the agenda this evening. If there are any public comments at this time, please utilize the raised hand feature of the webinar, and we will call on you. Remember to state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes. Last I checked, we only had one attendee, and I do not see that their hand is raised. Going once, going twice, moving on, closing the public comments to adoption of the consent agenda. We do not have a consent agenda for this evening, just double checking with Director Hamed, that I'm correct on that. All right. So now we move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Motion from the vice chair, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Teal. I'll do a roll call, Vice Chair Lester.
Yes.
Commissioner Bodie has not joined us yet, Commissioner Helber.
Yes.
Commissioner Teal.
Yes.
And I chair Hillisam also, and I, the motion passes unanimously. Now on to the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding a discussion of proposed Maraga general plan amendments. I believe staff has a presentation for us this evening. Director Hamed, did you have any remarks? And you may actually be the one that's providing the presentation.
So, thank you, Chair Hillis. We have our consultants tonight, Barry Miller with Barry Miller Consultants, and he will be doing the presentation tonight. We also have support from our legal counsel, which is Karen Murphy. And I just want to make some opening comments. So tonight's meeting is part of the advanced planning initiative. And the advanced planning initiative actually includes several components. Includes the housing element, which is a requirement by state law to be updated every eight years. The rezoning of commercial infill areas to allow for multifamily housing. And I will get into that a little bit. The Bollinger Canyon rezoning, which has been a town council goal. The environmental impact report, which is programmatic level and which is required as part of this housing element. General Plan Consistency Amendments and the safety element. So the housing element is required, is a required update and that in order to address the town's regional housing needs allocation of 1,118 new units. That this requires the town to rezone the commercial areas to accommodate the higher densities. This is already a vision that is incorporated in the 2002 adopted general plan. And under Chapter Four, under Community Design, CD 1.1, it does state, to the extent possible, to concentrate new developments in areas that are least sensitive in terms of environment and visual resources. And that includes the Maraga Center and the REEM Center areas. Over the last year, the planning commission, town council, staff and residents have weighed in on the rezoning of these areas to allow for the new units. The town is not building the new units, just rezoning to allow the units. So it doesn't mean that we will have a lot of construction activity come January 31st. There's still a process that projects need to go through. So tonight is phase one of the general plan consistency amendments and the safety element. So we're focused on a certain component of this advanced planning initiative. And it will allow the town to enact on the policies that we have been discussing over the last year in order to respond to the state's requirement for new housing units. So thank you, and I will let Barry Miller share his presentation and walk us through the details.
And Barry, before you get started, I just wanted the, the record to reflect that Commissioner Bodie joined us at 6:07. And sorry to interrupt, I just want to be sure that was reflected.
No problem at all, I just wanted to confirm everyone can hear me and see my screen on their screen. Yep. Great. Okay, so we are here this evening to talk about the consistency amendments. As Afshah said, this is really an informational presentation. We are not asking for commission action at this point, that is going to happen at a subsequent meeting. As Afshah laid out, the comprehensive planning initiative includes the various components that we've, we've just gone through. So without repeating everything on the screen, I will just point out that there are certain actions that need to be taken by January 31st, 2023, in order to comply with state law. And then there are a number of other actions that are, I won't say they're not time sensitive, because they are time sensitive, but they don't need to meet that January 31 deadline. So we do anticipate coming back to the commission in February and March to talk about the actual zoning standards and the objective design standards, particularly for the REEM Center, but also there are a number of changes in the Maraga Center area. And those will be happening in early 2023 after we get the housing element adopted and the EIR certified. So we're here this evening to talk specifically about one component of the initiative, and these are the consistency amendments to the general plan. So just for some context, the general plan for Maraga was adopted 20 years ago in 2002, after a three-year process from 1999 to 2002. It's under state law, you can amend the plan every four years, but the town of Maraga has amended far less frequently than that. The most recent amendments were in 2010 when the MCSP, the Maraga Center specific plan was adopted, 2015 when the last housing element was adopted, and then 2018 when the hillside and ridgeline amendments were adopted. There have been other minor amendments over the years, but those were the sort of the milestone amendments of the last decade, or a little over a decade. So the horizon year of a general plan is typically 20 years. So it is an opportune time to kind of step back and revisit our plan. We have changing state laws that require that we amend certain parts of the plan. Some of the data in the existing plan starts to become a little bit stale when you see references to, for example, the 1990 census, or you know, you anticipate, you're looking at a time when the internet was still relatively new. And so you think about the, the way the world has changed in the last 20 years, and there's, and then there's a necessity to update the plan. Projections change, and we're sort of dealing with that right now as we look at this regional housing needs allocation that's much larger than what the 2002 plan anticipated. We also have new issues emerging, things like climate change and wildfire hazards that we're addressing in this plan, and the requirement for internal consistency between the elements of the plan. So just as a refresher, the general plan for Maraga has 11 chapters. Most of these are referred to as elements, and a majority of those elements are mandated by state law. So every general plan in California has a land use element, a housing element, a circulation element, an open space element, a safety element. There's also a noise element requirement, and that is covered by open space. In Contra Costa County, all jurisdictions are required to have a growth management element. And then the Maraga general plan has an action plan, which is really taking all of the policies in the general plan and summarizing how are these policies implemented in the day-to-day activities of the town. Then there are a series of appendices in the plan. So this is again, the, the plan that was drafted 20 years ago, that's guided the town for the last 20 years. So we are doing a plan update now, and I want to point out, as Afshah just, just mentioned, that it's a two-phase process. The first phase is adopting the new housing element, which we're required to do, and create and, and making changes to the plan to keep it internally consistent and current with state law. The second phase of the plan, which is really intended to occur after we get our certified housing element, has a scope that's still to be determined. But the idea is that we're not making radical changes to the 20, to the 2002 plan. The values and vision of that plan remain relevant, we'll, we'll confirm that. But there are, this is an opportunity in phase two to do some cleanup and update beyond what we're doing right now. And really, I'll say what we're doing right now is fairly minimal, just to keep the plan internally consistent. But that, that next phase will be an opportunity to look at each of the elements, do a little bit of a deeper dive into topics like community design and open space, and see, you know, can our plan include new policies or initiatives on topics like sustainability, where we've heard from the community that the 2002 plan really didn't dive deep. We do have an EIR that's being done as part of phase one, and anticipate that we can use that EIR to address the phase two portion as well. There will be an addendum or a supplement to that EIR in the next phase. But the big land use changes, which is really the increase in density and the allowance for housing at the REEM Center are, are happening as part of phase one. So the amendments, we've tried to characterize these and identified five general categories. First are the pure consistency amendments, and I, by the way, have one slide for each of these topic areas. And then that's, that wraps the presentation. But we'll go through each of these. The housekeeping and cleanup amendments are really just, I would say, more clerical. The circulation and safety element are to comply with state law. The Bollinger Canyon amendments are to carry out a longstanding council goal of assigning a permanent general plan designation and land use and zoning designation to that study area. And then there are certain amendments that are included in the EIR for the general plan. So we'll talk about each of these briefly. So the consistency amendments are really, you know, we're, we're making some changes through the housing element, increasing the allowable densities from 20 to 24 units per acre, and allowing housing in the REEM Park, REEM Center area. And the current general plan doesn't really reflect that. So we need to just go through the plan and find references to the maximum densities and make sure that they're consistent with what's being recommended by the housing element. We also want to make sure that there are no statements in the general plan that appear to contradict the direction where the housing element needs to go. And this is really a state mandated direction about making sure we're planning for a variety of housing types that we're creating housing opportunities in all parts of the town. And there are certain statements, not many, but there are a few that say things like only single-family homes may be permitted in this area. So not anticipating major changes, but there are things like accessory dwelling units. We have SB 9 and other things that are now basically saying, we really can't say that anymore, we have to allow for other housing types in our residential areas. And then there are some, a couple of changes to the land use element in general plan diagram. And as I mentioned, just making sure that our goals and our policies support this idea of planning for a diverse range of income groups. So the second category are changes to the general plan diagram. These are really focused in two areas. One is the assignment of, of land use designations to Bollinger Canyon Study Area, which is the slight purple area at the right of the screen. And then we are also accommodating the higher densities. Interestingly, we don't actually have to make major changes to the map because the designations are in place. What we're really doing is adjusting the definitions of what's allowed in each of these colored areas on the map. And right now, the general plan, oddly enough, does not have definitions of the land use categories. I will say this is the first general plan that I've seen in 35 years of doing this that has no definitions of what's permitted in these categories. So we are adding those definitions and defining the, the density ranges, making sure that the Maraga Center designation matches what's shown on this map, and then updating the Bollinger designations. We can come back to any of these slides after the presentation. So the, the housekeeping and cleanup amendments, this is really taking care of things where you're reading the document and you think, wow, that's really outdated. That's clearly something that was written 20 years ago. So when there's references to the Maraga Center specific plan as something to be done in the future, it was done 12 years ago, so we want to make sure that the plan reads as a current document. This includes an explanation of the comprehensive advanced planning initiative that's now underway. There are some references to the state density bonus law with outdated information, so we're updating that. There are a lot of references to doing a specific plan for the REEM Park area. And the town is not going to be doing a REEM Park specific plan. We are actually creating the development standards and design standards now through this process, and will be narrowing the focus of that to what we're calling a public realm plan, which really looks more at the street system, the circulation system, infrastructure, streetscape improvements, and how to make sure that that area is, is coordinated and is attractively developed in the future without getting into the zoning regulations that are usually included in a specific plan, because we're doing those now. So the circulation and safety element amendments, the circulation element, we've met with the commission, I think it was in January of this year, to talk about the shift to vehicle miles traveled. And this is a new metric for measuring transportation. So we are required, under the California Environmental Quality Act, to use VMT as the measure of when an impact is significant. This is really how much driving does a project induce versus how much congestion does a project induce when it's approved? So we have new policies related to VMT in the general plan. And I want to point out that we're not eliminating the level of service standards that are in the general plan. We are simply complementing those with the VMT standards. The safety element, under state law, we need to identify very high wildfire hazard severity areas and add a few new policies that are related to wildfire, recognizing those hazards, and also recognizing the need to plan for evacuation. And there is an evacuation analysis that will follow during phase two of this process that, so there'll be further, further amendments to the safety element in the future. But this is the initial step. We've actually met with the commission previously to talk through the Bollinger Canyon amendments. You've reviewed a previous draft of these amendments, and they include eliminating a goal in the general plan that was designating the 423 acres that you see highlighted here as a study area, and that area is also zoned study area. There is also a implementation measure that goes into great detail about what would be required in Bollinger Canyon before anything can happen there in the future. So that language is largely being deleted and replaced with actual general plan land use designations. And this is what we walked both the commission and the town council through earlier this year. The rural residential designation, which has a five-acre-per-unit density standard, is a new designation that's being added to the general plan through this, these amendments. The area on the end of Joseph Drive will be designated one dwelling unit per acre, which is consistent with what's there now. And then the, the ranch property, the, will be designated as non-moso open space, and that is consistent with its, with the intended use of that property as it's conveyed to the John Muir Land Trust. The, so the, so the land use diagram is amended here, and there are new references to the rural residential designation added in the general plan, since that's a new category. The last category of amendments is SEQUAR-related, so there is actually, at your next, one of your next commission meetings, you'll be getting a report from our environmental consultant walking through the EIR for the general plan update, including the housing element and the rezoning and the Bollinger Study Area rezoning. This EIR is anticipated to be, we're, we're actually planning on releasing it at the end of this week. So it's really just days away from being out for public review. And this is sort of a sneak preview in that we're telling you here that it indicates potential, significant, unavoidable impacts on certain topic areas. And there are mitigation measures that are recommended in the EIR to reduce those impacts. And many of those measures are to add certain policies and programs to the general plan so that future development complies with these measures, and this becomes essentially self-mitigating by doing, for example, biological resource studies or geological studies and so forth. So that's all contained in section N of chapter 11 of the general plan. So the action plan in, in the general plan has this new section, which includes about a dozen mitigation measures from the, from the EIR. Last slide just summarizes our next steps, and we will be bringing this to the town council in November. Not sure if that date is correct, actually, because that would be next Tuesday, and I don't believe that, well, Ashan can correct me, I think that's actually 11/9. But we are going to be coming back to the planning commission in January of 2023 with a resolution that asks you to approve or recommend approval to the council of these general plan consistency amendments. That'll be one of several resolutions that will be before you in January. Also, there'll be one to ford the zoning, sorry, for the, the housing element and the EIR, and then the Bollinger zoning amendments to the town council. We anticipate they will be taking action at their January 25th meeting. And between now and then, I think I'm probably on almost every planning commission agenda, because we have a lot still coming to you between now and January, including inclusionary zoning, the draft, the hearing on the draft EIR, and updates on the housing element as we get our comment letter from HCD, which is due in about two weeks. So that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions and take any feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Vice Chair.
I might as well ask now. It's not super related, except to say that Bollinger Canyon amendments. I feel like I missed a chance to kind of look at this in some way. Is this like sort of settled and we're just moving forward with it, the Bollinger Canyon zoning? And I feel like that went straight to the town council, and they had their way with it.
Yeah, through the chair, we did review the Bollinger Canyon language, and planning commission did make a recommendation to town council on the standards for Bollinger Canyon and the rezoning. And we held a meeting with council after the planning commission's recommendation. I think it was May.
Yeah, it was May.
And so council also had an opportunity to review the, the draft standards and the draft ordinance language and clean it up some more. So we are proposing that that will come back in January. I think we've, you know, had sufficient input, we've had community meetings.
Okay.
There, and I, my, my recollection, Commissioner Lester, as you may have been absent at that meeting, because we, we had a robust discussion about the definition of agriculture at that meeting. That's my recollection.
Okay, great.
Any other commissioners with questions? I did have several of my own, and I did send these over to the planning director beforehand. Just question for you, just for protocol. So there were a couple typos that I, that I found would now be the appropriate time for me to mention those with my questions, or should I, I guess I'm trying to figure out what my own rules for the meeting should be. But I, so I think I'll stick with my questions, and then I, and I'll just give you the quick list of what the, the three things that I found. First question. What specifically is the difference between a public realm plan and a specific plan? And the reason I'm getting at that is when we did the MCSP, we were able to actually have specific design guidelines that were only for the, the MCSP. I'm, would we have that same opportunity for REEM? For example, I know we had some, some design comments specific to architectural design and those types of things.
Yeah, so we will be bringing to the commission zoning standards and objective development and design standards for the REEM Center. I believe February, March is the timeframe that we're looking at. We've actually drafted those at this point. So that, that, there's a corresponding component of the MCSP that has that content, and we basically have already created that for the REEM Center area, and we'll be bringing that to the commission as part of rezoning that area, we'll be including that. So what's left are the, the parts of the specific plan that aren't included in that effort are really, you know, what's the circulation system, what are the parking needs, what are the water sewer drainage needs? What kind of streetscape are we wanting, what are the public improvements that are needed to make this happen? That's what's in the public realm plan. So the development standards will already be adopted before the public realm plan is prepared.
Got it. The other question that I have is on page 81. The goal has been amended, but semi-rule has been dropped. And I'm wondering why semi-rule was dropped from, from the goal.
Yeah, let me just get to that page. And I, I think I looked at this one, and the reason was, and it, by the way, we can add it back in. I, in this case, it's not, it would not. Sorry, am I sharing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Forgive me for scrolling so quickly.
So I want to point out while you're scrolling, Barry, that that is part of the, what we are now going to be calling the safety element. And what I also kind of want to explain is when we have these goals, a lot of that character, community character is already discussed in earlier chapters, like in community design and land use. So this is much more focused on hazards and mitigations, and it's more focused on, you know, those things that we would do for safety for the town as a whole. So that's why I think we felt that we wanted to make it broader rather than focusing on community design or the character of the community.
Yeah, and I would say it, it would not. Yeah, and I would say it, it would not, we can, we can say a semi rural community that effectively minimizes threats. I think that if that's the issue, that's not a problem. The, I think the issue here is that to say that we would be a community that was free from hazards is a little bit ambitious when you have the hazards present and they are getting worse, if anything, terms of things like wildfire, climate change, et cetera. So it's really, how do we minimize threats? And the semi rural really wasn't as germane to the sentence. So that's the reason that that came out. But I don't think it's a problem to add it back in.
Yeah. And if I may just add one more thing, you know, when we're talking about the redevelopment of the infill commercial areas, I think that's where we would see maybe a different character and we haven't defined that character quite yet. But that's probably an opportunity for us to maybe not put the cart before the horse.
If I could through the chair.
Oh, real quick, Commissioner. Sorry, Commissioner Albert, Vice Chair Lester at our hand raised first.
Sorry. Really quick, that, the removing of the semi rule struck me as well, Chair. And I thought, ah, but in element two values and guiding principles. It does clearly say that we value our attractive community environment and our semi rule setting. And we take pride in our well maintained homes, abundant landscaping, high design standards. And then it goes through and it does remove a couple notes of semi rule setting. But I think that that's sort of solidly set in there is still for me, a guiding principle for Maraga. It just sort of doesn't need to be mentioned every time throughout. And so I was okay with that. I don't know if you are, but I just wanted to let you know that that was also there earlier.
Thank you. And Commissioner Helber, I'm sorry about that.
It was the exact same comment, you know, page two, one. And I know every time we're interviewed, I think we all say preserve semi rural character. It's very important to the purpose of the town. And I would be very reluctant to take it out of any of them. But maybe words method to make it fit.
Thank you. Any other comments on this particular point? I'm sorry, I did have a list of them and I see Commissioner Bodie.
Yeah. Do we have a definition for what that actually stands for being semi rural? Is there an official like description, like this is, this is what semi rural means? Because I hear, I hear it so much and it's kind of sacred. I mean, and it's kind of sacred, right? I mean, it's done what I hear and not from us, but it would just be helpful. I mean, I've been on playing commission now for over a year and I, I still have never really figured out. Well, what does semi rural mean as it pertains to Maraga? Because I think it probably means a lot of different things to people in California versus people in Illinois versus people in Oklahoma.
I don't think there is an official definition. I think it's really meant to be a value statement that it's not suburban. That there's something in between suburban and rural, and this is what that really is.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair, we, we do not have a definition for what is semi rural. And we do not have anything defined in our Maraga municipal code that lets us carry out what semi rural is.
I'm going to add one more, Chair. It's similar to that wildlife interface. What was that? Wildland?
Wildland urban interface.
Thank you. Wildland urban interface. Where it's that landscape between town and country, that transition zone. And I think that not just the outskirts of our town, but actually our entire town is designated as that wildland urban interface. So that's semi rural. Still can see the hillsides.
That's helpful. That's helpful.
I can see cows from my backyard. I think that qualifies. So my, my next question is on page eight, three. And it is S one dot one, three. The text says that the, I mean, actually go to that page, actually go where, where it is. It says, as defined by the Maraga municipal code and open space ordinance. And I'm just wondering if, if this, if it would be appropriate here for there to actually be a code reference so that a casual reader looking over this, or if there's a reason why we wouldn't put a code, code reference there.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I would not recommend a specific code reference as you're aware, codes change over time.
Got it.
So, you know, then, you know, there's always clerical errors. So I think I would just leave it open and then in the code itself, I would be more specific.
Thank you. See. I also had a general question because I noticed this in two different places. One was on page eight dash seven and another one was on page nine point one. On, on eight dash seven, it says continue to require review by the planning department. And, and then on page nine point one, it says continue to seek. I think it's regarding government best practices. I'm just wondering if there's a reason why we, it just seems to be extra words that are potentially unnecessary. Where in, sorry to split hairs here, but in, in S three point one, it could just strike, continue to and be required review. And then in, let's see, FS one dot one, instead of continue to seek, it should say just seek. So seek improved. Is there a reason why we wouldn't do that? Or is it typical that you have that kind of language?
I actually prefer to take out the words continue to, but what the feedback that I often get in preparing these plans is that if you don't put the words continue to, there's an implication that you haven't been doing that yet, and you're going to do that in the future. And in these cases, these are things we're actively doing now. So that's, I think it's, there's a little bit of, well, we're already doing that. We should say continue to do that. So that's, it's just semantics thing. It really is not substantive, I think.
So it, it struck me when I read it as, as defensive, but it sounds like that may be actually deliberately so. So thank you. That answers my question.
Okay.
And then, let's see. And then the last one, you already answered. This was regarding the design guideline. So those are all of my questions and I think I'll actually put the, the other comments into, on the typos into comments. Any other commissioners have questions before we move to public comment? All right. With that, then I will open public comment. For anyone that has questions, please utilize the raise hand feature of this webinar and we will call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So with that, we can move on, close the public comment section and move to commissioner comments. Excuse me. Do any commissioners have any, any comments? Vice Chair.
Yeah. I wanted to say this draft does a good job of cleaning up the language in terms of just making it more flexible per the new elements that we talked about as a town and that we've agreed to, to include under the housing element, such as increase in density and more mixed use options, instead of just referring to single family residences. It does go still keep it vague, which is good. Also, I think it did a good job of succinctly incorporating all of the new language that is needed to get our general plan up to, up to date and in compliance with state laws. So it didn't go above and beyond. It was just nicely, you know, added where it needed to be. And no major new, you know, mandates or things that we haven't discussed before. Nothing was surprising in here that I thought, you know, I'm always looking for the something getting snuck in there and nothing was snuck in there. So I was happy to see that. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments? Commissioner Helber.
Thank you. I'll echo Vice Chair Lester's comments. I think this was, does a great job in cleaning up some of the, the files and different inconsistencies. I did notice where the Maraga Center used to be specific plan area, you know, as a defined term. And the REIM Park specific area is also defined term. They're not always consistently, consistently referred to. Sometimes it's just the Maraga Plan. Sometimes it's just the REIM area. I think if we just do a find all, we'll probably find them and just make sure that where they're supposed to be capitalized to find terms, they are. That was just one house, just cleanup item. Very glad Carrie and Brenda brought up the semi rural. I had that done. And I apologize if this is a question and I was supposed to ask it earlier on section eight point eight, when we're talking about defensible space maintenance plan. We talk about requiring class A roof materials for new and replacement roofs. Does that apply to every single house in Maraga or is that only in certain areas for new subdivisions? I just want to be careful of what we're burden, we're putting on somebody who needs to replace the roof. Are they going to have to go to a substantially higher, more expensive roof material? And I, Carrie, I apologize. I guess that is a question of staff.
Yeah, that's something where, where we will have to look into. I don't know if, my assumption is if it's stated that way, that it would apply to the entire town. Okay, we will check with, with, with the fire district on that.
I think we should be cognizant of what mitigation we require to every house in Maraga. And we don't want to unnecessarily burden someone who's doing a remodel with expensive requirements. Along that same line, my other comment or question has to do with the new comprehensive advanced planning initiative, EIR mitigation measures that start on 11 30. And I know we're going to have a separate presentation on them. But when I read through this, I was getting concerned again that a simple, small residential project may suddenly be burdened with doing biological resource screenings for birds and resting bat or nesting bats and other mitigation measures that are very standard for large subdivision projects. And perhaps I'm not reading it correctly and it already is excluding those projects. But I just thought it was worth talking about for a little bit. And Barry, if you could walk us, me specifically through when these mitigation measures would be required, probably alleviate, hopefully alleviate my concern.
Yeah. And Director Hamid may want to weigh in on this and that. I will say we've been talking a lot about this very issue and expect we'll have a more extensive conversation about this at our next meeting where the EIR consultant will be present from, from Ringcon, because I think it would be good for the commission to provide feedback at that time. The intent of these measures is not to apply to an individual, single family house or a remodel. It's really meant for development projects that are, you know, more than, more than just a few units or that are in areas that are undisturbed. So I think we are looking at ways to communicate that better. And there have been even in the last couple of days, some edits to the, to the EIR, which will, you'll see when it's, when it is published that, that addressed what you just brought up. So I think we, we do need to clarify that.
Okay. Maybe we just threw in some terminology like the measures below may apply to future construction projects. That would at least give me some level of comfort. And then on the cultural resource one specifically, where it's requiring construction monitoring as a required measure. Wouldn't we instead look at the resource study and the evaluation? And if there's a potential for a, a significant resource, then we would require a specific construction monitoring and, and, you know, paying for someone to be there during earth disturbing activities. It just seems like the boiler, the boilerplate text is just too comprehensive.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have another look at that as well.
Okay.
Doesn't this say in or around a potentially significant cultural resource on that construction monitoring?
I think it does.
Defined by the comprehensive advanced planning initiative EIR. So there must be a definition in that EIR that we're just not seeing yet.
Right.
Of what that significant cultural resource, I know the monitoring of those sorts of things like Native American burial sites and stuff, that's super common. You know, having worked in Malibu, they are on that. And I think it's defined as a specific area. You see one little thing and someone comes out. So I think we're going to get a better definition of that already. But yeah.
Yeah, we will. And then we'll check again before the draft EIR is released. Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. You're meaning we don't need a cultural specialist on every project that we're building. That would not, that would be ridiculous.
Correct. I think what Commissioner Helber is stating is that if we're doing infill areas, we want to try to encourage that as much as possible and to help streamline. So we want to not create onerous requirements. And we want to help, you know, take a more streamlined approach. Karen, did you want to comment on that too?
Thank you. I was just going to note that there are some limitations as noted by Vice Chair Lester in the text of the construction monitoring condition. So, for example, if there was development on an already developed site that would not involve ground disturbing activities and or around a potentially significant resource, then that monitoring would not be required. But again, I think we'll have more specificity, specificity in the EIR and we can also call this out with more detail as well to clarify.
You, I think that was a really good discussion and thank you for, for highlighting those areas. Looking forward to hearing the presentation on those mitigation measures later. Any other comments from commissioners, either Commissioner Bodie or Commissioner Teal?
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. The, I don't believe that we're being asked to actually make a motion. I think we're just receiving this item. So with that said, I would just, I think third, the recommendation, or perhaps it was second, the recommendation that we do add back semi rural on, on chapter eight. Also on the, the very minor typos that I saw on the introduction section, page. And I've already bungled up my packet here, so I'm just going to read off my notes. The introduction section, page one, seven. Under consideration of amendments, it should read at least one public hearing. And it reads hearings, so to be singular, not plural. The second one is under values and guiding principles on page two dash one. Under community design, it should read, the town will maintain its predominantly. There's an A, an errant A that also needs to be stricken. I just don't think it was included in the strikeout. On action plan, page 11 dash eight, where it says acceptable noise levels. It reads a little bit jumbled and I think that it's because unless needs to be removed. But I just wanted to highlight that sentence that it just needs to be a little bit more reworked.
Thank you. Those are good comments.
Thank you. And with that, I think we can close the, the public hearing and move back to our agenda. Let's see where we are. So we are now on routine and other matters. We don't have anything here. Do staff or commissioners have anything they'd like to raise under routine or other matters? We can move on to reports. Do any of the commissioners have anything to report? I would highlight that I do. So I was able to attend the, the developers roundtable last week. Thank you so much for staff for pulling that together. I thought it was very useful to hear the perspective of a really diverse array of. I thought it was very useful to hear the perspective of a, a really diverse array of, um, folks. Um, just, uh, I, if, uh, can you tell us whether or not the video of that is available for any commissioners that were unable to see that?
Yes, I was gonna, um, comment on that in my report as well.
Okay, well then I will not steal your thunder. Uh, thank you so much for pulling that together. I felt it was really useful. In addition, uh, at, in case you all are interested at tomorrow's, um, council meeting, they will be, there is a special section where they will actually be interviewing, um, a potential new colleague. We, I'm really happy to see that we have three applicants. I know in the past, it's been a little bit, uh, you know, slimmer pickings. Once we got down to the, to the wire on whether or not we were actually even going to have one. So it's really good to see the community is engaging on this. So, uh, and with that, um, that's all I have to report. And unless the other commissioners have anything to report, I wanted to hand it over to Director Hamid. I'll shortly proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to give you some staff updates. We are still anticipating, uh, written comments from HCD. What I'm hearing from other communities that have already gotten their comments, HCD is holding to that ninety days. So ours was submitted on August twelfth. So I'm anticipating that we will receive ours either on November twelfth or, you know, it's also Veterans Day holiday. Um, so maybe November tenth, hopefully. Uh, and then we will bring those comments, uh, once we receive them, we'll bring those comments, uh, to you. Uh, and while we're talking about HCD, we have gotten rapid and new information about the clarification for when the actual housing element is due. So I wanted to update you because there was a lot of questions coming in and not just from our town. Every city is actually, uh, opining on this and going through this, uh, because we thought we had a little bit of a buffer time. So HCD has provided clarification that we do not have any buffers. We absolutely have to submit our housing element, a compliant housing element by January thirty first. So our goal is to, um, bring all that information back to you, um, and keep working and, uh, adopt the housing element at a regularly scheduled town council meeting on January twenty fifth. Uh, I am making a presentation to town council tomorrow evening with all this new information. And it has a new updated schedule as well. So if you want to, you can listen to that. Otherwise I'll probably share the report and the new schedule with you. So, uh, the developer roundtable that you asked about, thank you for attending. Commissioner Bodie, Commissioner Polsky and, uh, Commissioner Chair, Chair Hillis. We also had two members of council attending. We had nine, uh, developers, uh, at that roundtable. Two of them were affordable housing developers, Eden Housing and Mid Penn Housing. We also had the two largest property owners there, uh, Jay Kerner with REAM Center and Dave Brizoni with Maraga Center. We also had Saint Mary's College, uh, which is a big part of this community. So I was really happy to see them, uh, at that roundtable. The roundtable, uh, was videoed, uh, so we were just able to put that today on Make Maraga Home. And, uh, you can, it's basically on, on YouTube, so you can watch that. Let's see, what else do I need to share with you? As you heard through the presentation today, the draft EIR, uh, is slated for release on October twenty seventh. So that's this Thursday. Uh, and it will be open for forty-five day period where we take comments from the public. We will be bringing, uh, the draft EIR to you at a special meeting. So November seventh is that special PC meeting and because of elections on November eighth, we are trying to be accommodating to Maraga residents. And of course to our chair, uh, and hold the meeting on November seventh instead, which is Monday at six PM. And at that meeting, we will discuss the inclusionary housing ordinance. And we will also, uh, discuss the drafting, uh, EIR. And if I hear anything from HCD, I will bring those comments to you as well. Uh, so that is the plan, uh, for the next few days going forward. And that is all I have to share.
Thank you, Director Hamid. And, um, and I think I was remiss and also not, uh, just thanking you and Barry for all of the excellent work you did in pulling together these, um, these revisions to the general plan and everything you've been doing, uh, to, to, to repeat what I, I heard some of the members of the council saying to you at one of their last meetings, don't get sick. We have a lot of work for you to do. So thank, thank you again. Uh, I really know that you're, you're, you're really, uh, you know, burning the midnight oil. So appreciate everything that you and, and your staff are doing. And with that, uh, do I, we have an emotion to adjourn?
Question to adjourn?
A second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty-seven PM. Uh, thank you so much, everyone for joining us and, uh, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Happy birthday to your wife.
Thank you. Good night.